Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome our stakeholders tuning into the audio webcast and those who are here in Washington D.C. observing our meeting in person. Before we begin with the business of our meeting, I'd like to note that this year, the Gatsby is marking a milestone, its 40th anniversary. The Board held its first meeting on June 14, 1984. Since then, Board and staff members have worked hard to earn the responsibility entrusted to them to develop and maintain high-quality accounting and financial reporting standards for state and local governments across the United States. Ultimately, those standards have helped ensure that users of government financial statements have access to information they can use to make decisions and assess accountability. The contributions of Gatsby stakeholders over the years, over the past 40 years, has been invaluable as well to what's been accomplished so far. The time and expertise so many have shared by serving on advisory councils and task forces, responding to proposals, and contributing to Gatsby research has helped advance the cause of excellence in public sector reporting. So if I could, just a quick round of applause to recognize Gatsby. Turning to today's meeting, we'll hear reports from the FASB Chair, the Gatsby Chair, the FAF Executive Director, and the FAF Treasurer. We'll also receive reports about the latest activities of the Government Accounting Standards Advisory Council and the Trustees Standard Setting Oversight Committee and the Private Company Council. Before we get to those reports, I'd like to take a moment to recognize Jim Croker, who will complete his second term as FASB Vice Chairman on June 30, 2024. Jim joined the FASB in his current role in September of 2013. He came to FASB from Deloitte, where he served as the Deputy Managing Partner for Professional Practice. Prior to that role, Jim served as the Chief Accountant of the Securities and Exchange Commission from January 2009 until his departure in 2012. In his position with the SEC, Jim was responsible for resolution of a wide range of globally significant accounting and auditing issues during one of the more challenging economic times in recent history. Earlier in his career, Jim was also a FASB Fellow. Jim's been an exceptional Board Member and has left an indelible mark on the FASB. His commitment to providing high-quality financial accounting and reporting guidance and his championing of independent standard setting will benefit the capital markets for years to come. We thank Jim for his dedicated service and thoughtful contributions to the FASB and wish him the best of luck in his future endeavors. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge two reappointments to the Public Company Council, David Pesch and Adam Rohrck. David is Head of Security for Munich Re Specialty Insurance in New York and currently holds a Certified Construction Industry Professional designation and is an Officer of the Construction Financial Management Association Certification Board. Adam Rohrck is Managing Director of Forbes' Assurance Methodology and Innovation Group, a professional services firm where he works alongside the firm's Professional Standards Group, serving as a technical resource on auditing. In addition to the reappointments to the PCC, the Board of Trustees is opening a call for nominations for an additional member of the PCC. Nominations are due by the end of business Monday, June 24 of this year. The Board of Trustees has another open call for nominations that I need to mention. Currently, we're seeking nominations for a new Gatsby member. This part-time five-year term will start July 1, 2025. Nominations for the position must be submitted by the close of business Monday, July 8, 2024. More information about the role and nominations process can also be found on the Foundation's website. I have a final important note, a warm welcome to the new Technical Director for the FASB Jackson Day. The Jack won't begin his official duties until July 1. This is his first Board of Trustees meeting, and we'd like to recognize him. Jack joins the FASB after a very successful career with Ernst &amp; Young, where he rose through the ranks on a career path that took him to London, New York, Munich, and serving as EY's Global Director of Capital Markets, as well as EY's U.S. Chief Accountant. At the SEC, he also served as Deputy Chief Accountant and later Acting Chief Accountant of the Office of the Chief Accountant, in addition to having been a FASB Fellow earlier in his career. I'm pleased not only to welcome Jack to the role, but back to FASB. So with that, let's move to our regular agenda. The first item of business is to approve the minutes from the Board's February 27 meeting. May I have a motion? Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. We'll now move to the reports from our various leaders. First is FASB Chair Rich Jones. Rich, over to you.
Great, thank you, Ed. It is my pleasure to share the FASB's report for the first quarter of this year. We continue to make good progress on our agenda, and it's my pleasure to share some of the highlights of our accomplishments so far this year, including significant progress on our technical agenda, pressing forward with post-implementation reviews on three of our major projects, and welcoming new staff, as Ed mentioned. During the first quarter, the FASB issued final standards related to codification improvements and accounting for profits interest awards. We also made significant progress on many projects on our agenda, including projects cited by investors and our most recent agenda outreach as their highest priorities. And I thought it might be helpful to highlight the progress we've made on those seven projects, which were identified as part of our agenda outreach as the highest priorities. They include, first, accounting for digital assets. That's a project that we finalized a standard on last year. Income tax disclosures, a project we also finalized last year. The third item is disaggregation of financial reporting information, which was probably the highest priority we heard from investors. That's a project we've already issued an exposure draft. The Board's in the midst of redeliverations, and I'm hopeful we will be completing that project as a final standard later this summer. Fourth, we had input from investors on ESG-related transactions and disclosures, and that is currently on our technical agenda as two separate projects. First, we have a project related to the scope of derivatives, which will address the accounting for ESG-linked financial instruments. It's the type of financing that we're seeing becoming more and more prevalent, and we've heard from our stakeholders that the accounting could be improved for those transactions. The other relates to accounting for environmental credits. Again, it's another emerging issue, and we're focused specifically on the transactions related to the acquisition, granting, and our use of those environmental credits. The fifth item that we heard from investors was intangible assets, including software. Software is currently on our technical agenda, and we're hoping to issue an exposure draft by the end of this year. Intangible assets more broadly remains on our research agenda, and part of the reasoning for that is intangible assets by definition is a default category. It's everything you can't touch, and we have numerous forms of guidance addressing different subsets of intangible assets. But where we are now is really, we're focused on preparing an invitation to comment for later this year to get broader stakeholder input as to should there be a one-size-fits-all model? Are there changes in the outcomes of the accounting that's prescribed today for some of those subsets? And what would be the best path forward? So I look forward to updating you on our progress later this year. On the statement of cash flows, there's a project on our technical agenda right now related to the statement of cash flows for financial institution. That is one area where we heard consistently from both users as well as preparers that the statement of cash flows did not provide the most relevant information for financial institutions. Our Board is taking a look at that, again, hoping to make good progress on that through the balance of this year. The broader issue on statement of cash flows, we're still pursuing on our research agenda, and to be fair, we are hearing different input from different investor-type groups. Some who would like to see a wholesale change to something called the direct method, others who are, let's say, much more satisfied with the current statement and may be exploring some supplemental information related to that. It's something we'll be looking at as part of our research agenda and bringing back to our Board once again. And then the final item on our research agenda is financial KPIs and non-GAAP metrics. When you think about financial information outside of the financial institutions, be it EBITDA, be it free cash flow, be it funds from operations, those are often referred to as non-GAAP metrics because they are not in the financial statements. They aren't covered by our standards. But we hear over and over again, maybe there is a role for incorporating that information into the financial statements. Could it be standardization? Could it be better definitions? Could it be reconciliations? So that's something that we're looking at as part of our research agenda, and we do plan to issue an invitation to comment again on that project later this year to get better input from our stakeholders. I mentioned post-implementation review. We are continuing to make good progress on our post-implementation review related to revenue recognition, our current expected credit loss model, as well as lease accounting. We currently are planning to wrap up and bring back to the trustees our report on post-implementation of a review of revenue recognition later this year. Ed previously welcomed Jack Day to our board, to our staff from July 1, when Hillary moves on to the Board. We are actively preparing for both of those transitions, and we look forward to welcoming them both to their new roles come this July. And while I know Ed already thanked Jim Croker, I think I would be remiss not to recognize my fellow Board Member, our Vice Chair, Jim Croker. This will be one of many goodbyes Jim will have to listen to. But what I would just note, and probably the best compliment I can pay to Jim, he's probably one of the best accountants I've ever had the experience to work with. So he will be greatly missed, but I will tell you, his impact on standard setting just in his tenures here will go on long after his term has ended. So Jim, you'll have to hear this a few more times in the future. Sorry about that. So, but on behalf of my colleagues at the FASB, on behalf of my fellow Board Members, I do just want to say thank you to all of you for your support as we work to fulfill our mission, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Rich? Lynette?
Sure, thanks. Rich, I know we've had some stakeholder feedback in the past about the Emerging Issues Task Force and that you've made some improvements to that task force in the process. Can you comment on whether those changes have been well received or how they're working?
Sure, sure. And you're absolutely right, Lynette. And as part of our agenda outreach, we heard not only about projects we should work on, but really identifying maybe some processes that we could improve. And one of those processes was the Emerging Issue Task Force and the means to resolve emerging issues and effectively solve technical issues. So this year, we have reconstituted the EITF. We have all-new membership, and we also changed their operating procedures. The EITF now will control their own agenda. They will be able to discuss issues amongst themselves, and to the extent they reach a conclusion, it will come to the Board as an agenda recommendation as well as with a proposed solution. So we're not creating another level of gap, but we are using a very talented group of people who are really on the cutting edge of emerging issues to bring issues to us more timely and hopefully resolve them more timely for all of our stakeholders. We've had an initial agenda meeting. The EITF has added one item to their agenda, and we're looking forward to their first meeting this June. So we're off to a good start. I will say that the feedback so far with the progress that we've made has been very positive. I think everyone recognized improvements were needed, and we're looking forward to seeing that group operate.
Other questions?
Say, Rich, in your briefing, you mentioned all the different projects you have on your research agenda. I know you've explained this before, but I find it very interesting. How do you select items for the research agenda? And then how do you set a timeline expectation on what you have?
Sure, sure. No, I think that's a great question. The projects on our research agenda, my view is that they go on the research agenda where we could use as a Board better information to make a decision about, should we be adding a project to our technical agenda? And if so, what direction should we be going? So effectively is a way to do outreach with our stakeholders, stakeholders to gather more information and make sure our Board has more of a complete picture on an issue. It's paid dividends, for example, are accounting for digital assets, which went to a final standard within, I believe, two years of the initially adding it to our agenda, me and the research agenda, was greatly accelerated by the information we were able to gather during that time on the research agenda. I think it gives our Board more information. I mentioned several invitations to comment that we're planning on issuing. Again, the purpose of that is these are broad issues, and we are much more successful as a Board when we have a direction, we have a defined problem, and we have an idea of solutions that we think our stakeholders are looking for. That's the purpose. As far as timeframe, how long on the research agenda or the technical agenda? The technical agenda, I put down estimated due process next steps. That's solely to communicate with our stakeholders. We cannot ever get to those due process next steps without a majority of the Board wanting to get there. So it's really is a way of communicating with our stakeholders, but by no means does it circumvent any of our due process procedures.
Other questions for Rich? Great, hearing none. We'll now turn to the PCC Chair, Jerry Shaw.
Thanks, Ed, and thank all of you for letting me be here. It's a real privilege. I want to lead with, I only took this position January 1. My predecessor Candy Wright, who I think had been in the role for eight years, you know, I'm going to say she's left the PCC in such a great shape, it's sort of easy to come in with this. And so, you know, thank you for having her here before, and, you know, I hope you'll join me in thanking Candy for all the great things she's done. In this short period of time, you know, since, I don't have much to tell you since January. It's only been one meeting I've been in charge of, so I'm not going to try and tell you all the things that happened when I wasn't around. They're well-presented in the report in item 13 in the document on page 75. But I will say, the outreach that the PCC had in 2024 was as high in volume as it had ever been. The group met four times since last talking to you, including the most recent meeting in March of '24, and we've been thinking a lot about where we're going from here. We're working on setting some agenda priorities for the next, I'll say, 18 to 24 months. We're going through a series of evaluations of issues that are probably already existing that haven't been approached by us. And in our June meeting upcoming, it is likely we'll be picking from a number of them to move forward and to be working on what the research would be to get them on our agenda, really with a goal of closing off some things that perhaps could have been handled already but haven't been, and really looking for things that are pervasive to private companies, that there is a real difference that might be appropriate between private and public companies, or that there's an expedient that would allow private companies to continue to do the right thing in a time and manner. I can't comment enough about how superb the FASB staff is in supporting me. I had no expectations coming in, and they've been wildly exceeded. And the patience that they've demonstrated with someone new after eight years of having the same person is really, I applaud them for dealing with my idiosyncrasies, which in this short period of time, you've already noticed are many. So effective January 1 or thereabouts, including myself, we've added David Hoagland from U.S. Bank, Brad Hendricks, an academic from the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, and David Finkelstein, who's a practitioner at Singer-Lawork in Southern California, to the group. I'm excited about your approving David Pesch and Adam Rohrck to continue. They've been great contributors in my short period of time. Looking forward to having them on. In addition, Dan Knoll from the AICPA has now become an official observer. I don't know what kind of that means exactly, but he gets a seat at the table. That was my own sort of observation. He doesn't get to vote, he just gets to sit. As we go forward, you know, I look to the trustees and the FASB and the people participating, how can we fine-tune or expand our ability to get outreach from users and preparers in particular? As a practitioner, we can get practitioner feedback anytime we want. It's easy to find them. I know where they live, some of them anyway. But it's harder to get preparers and users to engage in standard setting. And so I think the group is interested in how we can do that, and I look forward in a year to be able to tell you what kind of progress we've been able to make. That's, those aren't even my prepared comments, but I'm happy to take any questions.
First of all, welcome and thank you for taking on this leadership role. And any questions for Jerry? Great, hearing none, and we'll go to Gatsby Chair Joel Black. Thanks.
Thanks, Ed, and good afternoon. Thanks for giving me an opportunity to update you on activities we have going on at the Gatsby. During the first quarter of '24, we did move all of our projects along, including one of our bigger projects, the financial reporting model, moving in early, a part of the second quarter being approved. So it is now Statement 103, and the Board is very excited about stakeholders seeing these improvements in financial reports in 2026. Additionally, our other comprehensive project, the Revenue and Expense Recognition Project, we made good progress and are close to being done redeliberating the recognition principles related to Category B transactions or those without performance obligations like taxes and grants. And we are close to then beginning to deliberate from input we received from the Preliminary Views Document on transactions with performance obligations. Other projects are also on track, and we have a number of documents scheduled to come out in the second half of this year, including the Board being scheduled to vote on a statement, potentially, for breaking out certain capital asset note disclosures sometime this summer. And we are scheduled to issue a Preliminary Views Document related to our infrastructure assets project in the third quarter, as well as a Preliminary Views Document on our Going Concern and Severe Financial Stress project in the fourth quarter. Fourth quarter will also see, hopefully, at least as scheduled, an exposure draft of a proposed standard on subsequent events. In addition to our technical standard-setting projects, we continue work on the Financial Statement Taxonomy and to communicating the progress we're making on that with the SEC as they contemplate how the Financial Data Transparency Act rules will be implemented for the municipal securities environment. We also completed during the quarter our Pension Post-Implementation Review for the Pension Standards and presented that report to the Oversight Committee at its meeting yesterday. Finally, early in the second quarter, one of the important parts of our calendar came around, and that is when our Advisory Council, the GASSAC, prioritizes potential projects for us. This is an important input mechanism for the Board as it contemplates and making sure that we're achieving our mission and working on the things that are really have highest importance to our stakeholders. And I won't steal any thunder about that prioritization as our new GASSAC Chair has a report right after mine. So with that, I'll end my report, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Joel? Mancher?
Just a second, thank you. Joel, you mentioned that GASP recently completed the Post-Implementation Review for Statements 67 and 68 Pension Financial Reporting Standards. Did you encounter any difficulties? Did GASP encounter any difficulties in completing that, you know, comprehensive review or challenges?
I think we learned, it was the first post-implementation review we've done in our new process. So I think we learned some things along the way. I wouldn't say we experienced challenges. We had a lot of stakeholders willing to provide input and interested in providing input, and we had a very thorough review that was conducted. I do think we, because of the timing, the cost information was a little bit hard to get because we started accumulating the cost information a year or two after the implementation. So certain governments struggled to, didn't have access to that cost information. So we have learned, so in current post-implementation reviews, we're accumulating that cost information kind of real time so that we get better information. With that said, we still got enough participation on the cost to be able to analyze the cost in the post-implementation review, but I think that's one of the more challenging things, and we've kind of learned along the way to compensate for.
Other questions for Joel? Mike?
Thanks, Ed. Joel, you've mentioned previously there's constraints on the financial reporting resources among many of your constituents, and that you guys would be holding a high bar to any GAAP changes that have to be material and significant. Can you kind of fill us in on some of the criteria you think about that would set that hurdle that things would have to raise to, to get to the materiality that you guys would act on?
Sure, and we have continued to do that. It's important, but it's important that we continue to achieve our mission, and it's really outreach, right? It's really going out to stakeholders and asking them, what do they need us to do? What are their problems? What are their challenges? What additional information might they need? And so those input mechanisms, whether it's us going out and talking to stakeholders intentionally or the Advisory Council, we meet with them three times a year, and we talk about emerging issues at each meeting, but the prioritization that I just mentioned too is another big input mechanism. So it's really about listening to our stakeholders, hearing the problems they have, and then the Board evaluating those and determining which ones might we best make the most improvement related to before we would then add the project.
Thanks. Any other questions for Joel? Beth?
Thank you very much. When you talk to stakeholders, again, the Financial Data Transparency Act is, the process is moving along. What concerns do stakeholders express about the future compliance with the FDAA?
So there's probably a lot that would take more time than we have to talk about, but I'll give you the two biggest ones we hear from two different groups that we hear, and the SEC has heard these and is listening to these voices. The investors and those in that community are worried about a loss of information that somehow implementation of this act will restrict the information they get to only certain pieces of information, but they feel like the information they get now is really valuable, and they don't want to lose any of it. And from the preparer community, it's the cost, right? What's the burden going to be placed on their resources in order to implement the act? So that, in addition to some other problems, those are the main ones that we hear from our stakeholders.
And thank you.
Thanks, Beth. Anything else for Joel? If not, as he mentioned, let's move to our GASSAC Chair, Robert Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the opportunity to present an update for the GASSAC today. So the, my report that I have, the prepared materials are on pages 98 and 99 of your booklet. A couple of the highlights, so we met on April 15 and 16 in Norwalk, Connecticut. 24 members attended, and six were unable to attend. There was, this was the first meeting for seven of our new members, and we had a three-hour new member orientation on the morning of April 15. It concluded with most of the new members meeting face-to-face with their mentors. We heard really good feedback around that experience, including at the end of our meeting, one of the new members expressed in front of the entire group just how thankful they were for the opportunity to meet with the mentor and felt valued and felt really included, which was a really a great piece of feedback to hear and was a substantial effort of our previous GASSAC Chair, Beth Pearson. So it was really neat to see the fruit of that effort to come to pass. The discussion topics that we covered were the financial reporting model, looking at the pre-ballot draft of the standard and basis for conclusions, the classification of non-financial assets on issues related to classification of capital assets held for sale, infrastructure assets on required supplementary information, subsequent events, a variety of topics such as the scope of the standard, the date through which subsequent events should be evaluated, descriptions of recognized and non-recognized events, and disclosure requirements for those subsequent events. We also talked about going concern uncertainties and severe financial stress, things around timing and level of detail were the topics that we discussed. And then finally, as Joel mentioned, there was a standing topic of emerging issues, and there were five topics that were offered up and discussed. As part of our annual meeting in the spring, as Joel mentioned as well, we had our technical agenda prioritization. That is an annual effort, and it's one where every member of the GASSAC, as we go around the table, we share our no more than three high priorities and three medium priorities. We're very encouraging of our members to engage heavily with their constituency groups, trying to get a very representative feedback of what the items are. In the list that we had, which are 35 in total, which cover things like potential new topics, reexamination of prior standards and items that are in between, such as monitoring activities. The highest-rated topics that were put forth from the GASSAC were electronic financial reporting and cybersecurity risk. Other highly-rated topics were the financial reporting entity, governmental fund financial statements, and subscription-based information technology arrangement implementation, which is the standard related to number 96. An area of emphasis for me this year, as I've begun my chairmanship for the GASSAC, is really to encourage discussion amongst the GASSAC members, seeing this is such a unique opportunity, provide really in-depth feedback to the Board and staff. And one of the, I thought there was such robust discussion, particularly among our new members, which was really great to see that they really jumped in right away, felt like they were, they seized the opportunity, if you will. The one example that comes to mind in, on our second day, around going concern uncertainties and severe financial stress, the first question to the paper, which covered the date for which the severe financial stress condition should be assessed, produced a 45-minute discussion that we really had to table just to keep on schedule. So just really appreciative of all the robust conversation that we had. Our next meeting is scheduled for July 8 and 9 at a location to be determined, and wanted to make a final comment just how appreciative I am on behalf of the GASSAC, of the Board and the staff. They do a great job of laying out the issues in discussion papers and through opening comments. Lisa Parker, in particular, she's our GASSAC Coordinator. She is just wonderful to work with, very knowledgeable, and appreciative of her efforts to compile the results of our technical agenda prioritization and report back to our committee. That completes my report, but happy to answer any questions that may be. Uh, that completes my report, but happy to answer any questions there may be.
Thanks very much. Any questions for Robert?
So um, this is, uh, I just want to say this is more in the way of a comment. Uh, this is Rob's first year as Chair of GASSAC. He's been a member. Uh, he's raised the bar. Um, as a prior chair, I can honestly say you've raised the bar, so thank you. Uh, and I want to thank him for his leadership and recognize his immediate impact, uh, especially promoting increased engagement with our stakeholders and constituencies. And uh, look forward for more of this as you move forward, and just want to thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Beth.
That's high high praise coming from the immediate past chair. Um, our next item is a report from the Oversight Committee Co-Chairs Manju Ganerewala and Tim Ryan and Manju. I'm not sure which of you is going first. Manju, well, thank you.
Thank you, Ed. The Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee met yesterday on Tuesday, May 21st. We received information reports from FASB Chair Rich Jones and GASP Chair Joel Black. And as we do at each meeting, we discuss the FASB and GASP board meetings that trustees have observed in the past quarter. Yesterday, we heard from Trustee Rick Rysik and FASB Liaison to the PCC, Sue Casper, regarding their observations of the PCC meeting that took place on April 18th. And in addition, Trustee Ted Gold-Goldorpe regarding his meeting observations of the FASAC meeting on March 5th, from Trustee Brian Lewis regarding his meeting observations of the GASP meeting on March 25th and 26th, and from Trustee Marion G regarding his meeting observations of the GASP meeting on May 6th. The committee and its participants participants held engaging and valuable discussions on several important topics. For any stakeholders interested in viewing a recording of yesterday's public session, you can find this on the FAFF website. With regards to the report received from GASP Chair Joel Black and Technical Director Alan Skelton reviewed the main highlights of the first quarter. Many of these matters have already been covered in GASP Chair Black's uh report during the session. Other topics discussed by the committee included a thorough summary of GASP's draft final report for the pension standards post implementation review, which has received the committee's review and input and been shared with the full Board of Trustees. An educational session on GASP's PIR process overall, which gave the committee an opportunity to learn more about the different stages and milestones of uh post implementation review process. And with that, I will turn things over to my co-chair, Tim Ryan. Tim?
Co-Chair, and good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for joining. I'd like to give you a little color on the FASB update. Um, in our Oversight Committee meeting, Jeff, um, Rich and Hillary gave us an update on the topics they covered with you earlier in the session, and they went over the, they went over the progress of the last quarter. And again, many of the matters we talked about are what we discussed, Rich and Hillary just took us through. I do want to give the folks listening in the public session a sense that a number of the standards that Rich and Hillary talked about are standards that we've looked at in the past. And we talked about the pros and cons of continue to look at them, but as Rich pointed out, a number of investors are giving us feedback, and we, as a Board of Trustees and Oversight Committee, we're proud that we're listening to those groups and making sure that we get that feedback and respond. We will allocate capital and resources to that, and we think that makes sense, and we had a good discussion about that. We also talked about continue to get feedback from investors on an ongoing basis, and because that never stops, and we had a good discussion around that. And we also just talked about the overall cost burden um of financial reporting, and we have confidence that that is something that the board regularly factors into their discussions as well. Uh, it was a good, robust discussion, and there was a lot of to and to and fro as we had that discussion. I also want to comment on the PCC effectiveness. As people are aware, our comment period closes on May 31st. We are eager to get comments on the PCC effectiveness review, and we encourage you to go to the website um and give us that feedback so we can process, so the team can process that and then factor in the right and appropriate next steps. Ed, with that, um, I will turn it back to you.
Thanks, Tim. Any questions for Manju or Tim? If not, our next report will be from FAF Executive Director John Auchenclos. John?
Yeah, thank you, Ed. So last evening, we were honored to host many of our stakeholders at a reception here in Washington. And I want to take a moment to thank everyone who attended and engaged with us. A brief update on our appointments activity. So in addition to the two reappointments to the Private Company Council that Ed mentioned earlier, the Appointments Committee of the FAF Board of Trustees is currently conducting many important searches. One of these is a search for vacancies to be left by our scheduled to be departing FAF trustees Bruce Herring, Mike Rawlings, Tim Ryan, Larry Salva, and Shundran Thomas, whose terms will all conclude on December 31st, 2024. And as Ed alluded to in referring to our call for nominations, a search for a new GASP member to replace Brian Caputo, whose term will conclude on June 30 of 2025, and a search for a PCC member to replace Paul Hensley, whose term will conclude on December 31, 2024. We hope to be able to announce appointments for each of these searches before the end of this calendar year. The Foundation's 2023 Annual Report is nearly complete with a continuing theme of standards that work from Main Street to Wall Street. The report will be posted online in the next week or so, with the on-demand print copies available upon request. And lastly, I would just like to re-echo um a point made by our trustee, Tim Ryan, just now with regard to the PCC effectiveness review. There is still time to give us public comments, and I want to underscore that stakeholder input is critical to the success of this review. Um, and so we hope to receive letters and um that will share all that input with us, and we'll take that into account. So with that, I'd like to turn things back to you unless there are any questions, Ed.
All right, any questions for John? Seeing none. Uh, lastly, a report from our treasurer on the financials, Manju?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The FAFF's financial results for the first quarter ending March 20, 2024 are located on page 100 of the briefing materials. Overall, the financial condition of FAFF remains strong. Um, I'd like to just highlight a few items of note. Net assets increased approximately 49 million, primarily related to recognition of the entire year of FASB and GASP accounting support fees in the first quarter. Overall, there is a 2.2 million favorable variance against budget attributed to the following. Operating expenses were 1.6 million favorable against budget, primarily due to savings of placement fees. Uh, these are fees paid for trustee and FASB Technical Director placements and savings from salaries and benefits that were lower than budgeted due to open positions. Reserve fund investment income was higher than expected, approximately half a million higher, um, again, due to favorable market conditions. And total headcount is six below budgeted as of 3/31/24. This includes four positions in FAFF, two of which will not be refilled, and one position each in FASB and GASP. And those are the highlights, and that concludes my report.
Thanks very much. Any questions for Manju? Okay, this is the end of the public session of today's FAF Board of Trustees meeting. Thank you again to those who tuned into the webcast and those who observed the meeting here in person. Uh, if I may, let me remind everyone that the next FAF Board of Trustees meeting will be held virtually on Tuesday, August 13th. Thanks so much, and have a good day.